Thank you. A couple of things we need to get out of the way here. We need to do an election for council president since Mayor Mickelson is gone due to weather tonight.
Mr. President, I nominate Jeannie Demas.
We have Jeannie nomination. Do we have any others or a second?
I would second that from Adam President.
I have a second and we need to do a roll call or a roll call, please.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Pedri?
Yes.
Demas?
Abstain.
And then we'll do a roll call meeting.
No roll.
We all voted for that.
Does that suffice?
Your Honor, we can go through and do a roll if you want to.
Sure, let's make it official.
Counselor Allen, Demas.
Here.
Pedri?
Here.
Zadi?
Here.
Hickerson?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Batolo?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Mayor Mickelson.
Okay, with that, we want, I want to get a motion for approval for a revised agenda before you. If I could get a motion, please.
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I do want to make a statement just in light of events that happened yesterday morning. And our gratitude to our first responders. It's, we ask them to do a lot for our communities, to be there for everybody at the time of need. And a lot of times it's in very stressful or life-threatening situations. They train hard and they train for things that they hope they never get a call for. Unfortunately, yesterday, they did get one of those calls. Thankfully, it turned out to be a hoax. But I do know from what I've heard, the SRO officers that were at the high school when a call for an active shooter came in, they're out in the parking lot and directing traffic because the weather was a mess and the traffic was horrible. When the call came in, they ran straight to the high school. I saw video of police officers pulling up to the high school. And at the minute their vehicles stopped, they were out of their vehicles and running towards the school to confront whatever was behind those doors. Nobody knew at the time it was a hoax. So I wanted to just extend a great amount of appreciation for our first responders for this community. Fire department was on call, on station at, what school was that again, chief? The old Lincoln parking lot. The hospital, they went into their, activated their protocols and were prepared, calling people in, getting rooms ready, and everybody did what they're supposed to do. I think as a community, we could be very grateful for the people we have providing our first responding services. I just want to make sure everybody acknowledges that it's hard work, it's stressful work, and I don't think they get the acknowledgement they deserve a lot of times. But after yesterday and what I saw and witnessed, I think we really do owe them our gratitude for all that they do. So to the Rock Springs Police Department, the fire department, the hospital, I believe the sheriff's department was involved. All those involved, if I'm missing anybody, ambulance service and whatnot. If you see them, thank them. And I just want to give them a round of applause. So please.
Mr. President?
Thank everybody in your staff for all that they do.
So I just kind of wanted to echo on that. I've got a child that's a student up at the high school and I'll try not to get too emotional on this. But about eight fifty-ish, I got a text from him, which was really outside the norm from what my son would actually say to his dad. And I thought, okay, something is jacked up here. Something is just not right. And so the first thing I did is I went to Sweetwater Now, you know, one of the online news sources, and there was nothing. And I thought, you know what? If I want actual factual news, I'm going to go to rants and raves. So I did that. And of course, you know, the typical factual information was just flowing. And I thought, okay, so there was some validity to my concern about the texts my son had sent me. But so I've known Chief Erst Palmer for a while. And I thought, you know what? If, if, I'm going to try to keep it clean. If stuff's going to go bad, there's nobody that I would want in charge of it other than Chief Erst Palmer. And I knew that if I was just patient and I waited, that the information I needed would come. And it would be as a positive an outcome as I could hope for. And being patient and waiting for a little while, and patience isn't always my strong suit. But eventually, the news came through that everything was okay. And so most people know that I was a police officer for almost thirty years. Mr. Hanson, Councilman Hanson, was also a police officer for a significant amount of time. You know, we know that there are certain things we shouldn't do, which is calling the police and saying, hey, what's going on? Because we know they're doing their job. And I got to tell you, between what I saw online and ultimately through the press releases, they did it right. And you know, we see things like the Uvalde response, which was tragic. We know that our police department is not going to be Uvalde and that they are going to do things the right way. And not just our police department, our school district. You know, they kept in touch with the parents as best as they could in the situation. And while there may have been some grief given to them through the social media, they handled it as well as any school district and police department and multi-agency reaction could be. They did a great job. So chief, you know, well done and thanks.
Mr. President, I'd like to agree with him that they did do well and it seems like everything went good. That's what all the training that we go through to do. It's not so much that it happens, but the fact that we've trained and know what's going on and go from there. Also, we have dispatchers in our presence. I can't think of the millions of calls that they got through their center during that time. And the fact that they do a wonderful job also. So I mean, it's a total team effort and everybody seemed to work really well and do a good job. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
That's, I echo dispatchers too. I apologize. I didn't maybe go first.
I didn't see you guys sneak in, so I.
And I did, when I, listening to the radio scanner, what I went to and the communication professional, you guys were calm, clear. I think once it was realized that there were parents there that were concerned, you actually got a press release out right away. I know your focus as far as law enforcement was to on other things. But no, I think everything, it was amazing to see, so I do appreciate it.
I think one of the other things that we need to kind of look at is, you know, we were fortunate that this was a hoax, that it wasn't a real event. The amount of anxiety and stress that I went through for about seven minutes, I can't imagine what it would be like for police officers, communications officers, EMTs, fire personnel and parents if this were a real event. And man, it's, it's hard to comprehend what a tragic lifelong situation that would be. And I know that my son and his classmates are going to be affected by just this hoax for for the rest of their lives. You know, but you know, we've got to, we've got to think forward. And I know the chief and all of the administrators from each agency have thought this forward. And we couldn't ask for a better response. But you know, this is, it's kind of one of those things that we just, it's going to happen eventually. And knowing the, the people that we have in the positions that they're in are ready for that terrible day brings me, you know, a little bit of peace, so.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on, on to the consent agenda or the approval of minutes. The meeting of three twenty-one, twenty-three, and three twenty-three, twenty-three. Appointments for fire civil service commission and Rock Springs box art committee. Council committee and board reports. Joint Powers Telecommunication Telecom Board meeting minutes and the Joint Powers Combined Communication Board minutes, as well as correspondence and a letter from DEQ. Is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
One thing I wanted to change real quick too on the agenda, and I apologize. Melinda of the YWCA had asked for scheduling reasons if she could go first with the presentation. And so I'd ask if you please do that now, or actually, and then we can do a proclamation.
I'll just say a few things really quick before. I appreciate this. I'm certain with not only the incident at the high school, but then we had a wonderful snowstorm on top of this. It added so much fun to everything, and so I'm the only one that got to show up today for this. So, and this was the only meeting of the day that actually happened. All the other meetings got canceled. So I did want to say that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And this is a particularly dangerous crime because it is one that is so misunderstood and so under-reported. If you look at numbers, every sixty-eight seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in America. Every nine minutes, it's a child. These are numbers that are just ridiculously high. They are scary and they happen right around us. I mean, in Sweetwater County alone, in last year, we had fifty-five survivors of sexual assault come through the YWCA and offer assistance there. Half of them were children. So this is a crime that is very well out there. There are so many different things that go on with this. There's ways to understand it, to understand what you can do. We do this month every, every year, we try to bring awareness for the whole month. And there's different ways that you can do it. And the biggest one is to believe survivors. The important thing is the person that comes and talks to you. Yes, they will come to us as advocates, but most often, they first try it out with family. They first try it out with friends. And I'm really grateful that there is a lot of students here at the college because I want to say, if it's a friend of yours, they're going to come to you first. And we want you to believe them. This is not a crime that has a high rate of false reporting. It doesn't. It doesn't have any higher rate than any other crime. Ninety-eight percent of them are real. And we want you to believe them. And we want you to stand and support them and help them through this very traumatic event when they go through it. So one of the things we do with that is we have these teal bracelets that we put out all over the community. So I'm going to certainly at the end of this, offer these to you as well. And so that was one of the opportunities. Another one is to celebrate denim day. So get your calendars out, that's April twenty-sixth. And it's a very simple thing. It is wearing denim. You wear denim, get a picture taken, maybe do it as an office, a group, a wrestling team, essentially. And what you're saying is you're supporting this movement. Where it came from is it started in Italy, actually. There was a legislation, a meeting at the legislature. And there was a judge that simply said, well, she was wearing really tight jeans, so it had to be consensual because that was the only way they could have gotten off. And the women legislatures in Italy were so angry at that response that they immediately wore denim the next day as a response. And it's become a nationwide movement and it is everywhere. So on that day, we ask you to do that. Use your social media, take pictures as a group of denim, show that you report this and stand up. If you want more information, just Google denim day and you will find the current campaign that's out there. Another one is actually on April twenty-ninth, we are going to have the Run With The Badges. We are partnering with our law enforcement as well as the highway department and such to come do this race in April. So we'll be in Green River and we're going to be over at the pavilion. It's a five K, ten K, run, walk, kind of whatever you want to do, if you want to do, to show your support and come on out there. The registration is online. You can find it on the YWCA's Facebook page. And you can join us there as that is another step to try to do this. So I really appreciate everyone and their support for this and being willing to do this. Whether you wear the bracelet, whether you hand it out, whether you do denim day, believe the survivors. They need that support and they need that care when they go through this trauma. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas the city of Rock Springs recognizes the importance of designating a time devoted to increasing public awareness of sexual assault and support of agencies providing services to survivors of sexual assault and volunteers and service providers in our community work to provide a continuum of care and services to sexual assault survivors through a twenty-four hour hotline, counseling, shelter, advocacy, medical care and education. And the YWCA Center for Families and Children promotes prevention of sexual assault by offering educational presentations to schools, churches and civic organizations, as well as professional training in collaboration with medical, mental health, law enforcement, educators and criminal justice personnel regarding sexual assault issues. And the YWCA Center for Families and Children requests public support and assistance as we hold forth a vision of a community free from sexual violence. Now therefore be it resolved, I Rob Zadi, on behalf of Mayor Max Mickelson, do hereby declare the month of April twenty-twenty-three to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And I commend the observance of all citizens by urging each to learn what can be done to combat sexual violence and offer preventive, prevention measures and support services to survivors. Teal bracelets will be available throughout the community to wear in support of our awareness of sexual assault during the month of April. Run With The Badges will be held on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. The five K, ten K run or walk will start at nine AM at Expedition Island in Green River. Information booths and refreshments will be offered following the race. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got this to present to you.
Thank you. That's okay.
Okay, that will bring us on to bid openings, of which I'm going to have council president open tonight as I do have a conflict, as D. Bernardi is a client of mine. We do have one bid for the concrete replacement phase one, and that's D. Bernardi Construction from Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Oh. Bid bond is present and D. Bernardi's bid is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Again, that's three seventy-four, five hundred total bid.
Thank you. We will turn that in for review. Now on to a fun one. Wrestlers, congratulations. Mayor couldn't be here, but he did forward a statement that he wanted me to read. So I'll start with that. I am so very proud of all you taking your time to come before our council. I apologize for my absence. Unfortunately, our weather considered, conspired to keep me away. All of us at the city, whether staff, council members or myself, are incredibly proud of you for your accomplishment of winning the NJCAA Wrestling Championship. We are equally proud and grateful for the culture of consistent hard work and diligence you exhibit. Thank you for being such a strong role model and asset to our community. We appreciate you and congratulate you again for your fine work. Best regards, Max Mickelson. Just want to echo that as well. I know you guys have done very well over the years. And just to cap it off now with the national championship is just amazing. And other times I see you running up and down the Grant Street connector and I think some of you are carrying weights, additional weight and that, and it just blows me away. It's just a huge amount of dedication that you all exhibit and that's a great thing to see. So congratulations with your achievement. And I do have a plaque that I'd like to present to all of you. If we could have a picture over here, when anybody would like to make a statement or talk about the. That's cool.
Wow, that's beautiful.
First of all, seeing, seeing Chief Erst Palmer over here, that's really cool. It reminds me of all the good people that are in this community. You know, a guy who, you know, started in the trenches and now he's at the top, you know, just. And that's why we do this. I mean, that's why I do this is, is to make this community a better place and, and give the people here an opportunity to give them hope that we can do it right here. We have all the resources, the wonderful people, the culture that, you know, and now we've been so close for so many years. And, and you know, ultimately, you're, you're defined by, by one tournament in March, you know? And it's kind of been eluding us for the last thirteen years for me, anyway. So now in our fourteenth year, we finally won this national title. And you know, and I truly have said this and envisioned this as bringing it back home to Sweetwater County because this is for, for all the people, for sure. You know, how many people have, have taken a class up at Western or their kids are at Western, they graduated from Western or they've been up there, you know? So I think there's so many people here that can truly say, we, we did it. And so that's what I, I hope they, they're doing. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I can say it's always.
On three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Good job, Coach.
Thank you.
Congrats again.
What are we doing?
Okay, on to National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week presentation. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Are you here for petitions? Yeah, we're on to the presentations right now. We'll have public hearings and then petitions.
Okay.
Do you have anything you'd like to say? Come on, David.
Good evening, council. Mr. President, or Acting Mayor tonight, I guess. I'm just here to accept the proclamation for National Telecommunicators Week, which is next week. Of course, with all the recent things that have been going on with the weather and the somewhat active shooting, I guess, that happened yesterday, that was, ended up being a hoax. These ladies do a very good job. We have a few male dispatchers as well, but I believe you were working that call yesterday.
I took that call yesterday.
Yep, she took that call yesterday. So they do a really good job. And there's only a week a year that they get recognized officially, but I think they need to be recognized on a daily basis just as much as our other first responders. So just any questions otherwise?
I agree, David. And the calls you take, I can only imagine how you keep your composure in a lot of those. I'm sure it's the stress and everything involved, but you being able to communicate what needs to be communicated to the first police department, EMS or whatever. What you go home with at night, what you've heard, it's, I don't want to know, but I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire or emergency medical services. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers, firefighters and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the nine-one-one communication center. And public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And public safety telecommunication, telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers, firefighters and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And public safety telecommunicators of the Sweetwater County Combined Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires and treatment of patients. And, and each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that I Rob Zadi, on behalf of Mayor Max Mickelson, the city of Rock Springs, do hereby declare April ninth through fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Rock Springs. And I call upon the Rock Springs community to observe this week and celebrate our public safety telecommunicators whose diligence and professionalism keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You guys are welcome to ever come over and sit in. See, it looks like you're not...
How do you guys not take it home?
Oh, we do. You do. We have a plug at his back back. You shove it in there and tell the next one, and then you make your...
I've got to say, I've had the opportunity to work with both these dispatchers, and they're both just excellent over all the years. Matter of fact, with all the road closures and stuff we had today, Jen was right in there on all that this morning also. So it's just from one thing to the next. So thank you very much. We appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody?
Okay. Because I know this is intentional.
Well, we know that you guys really set the tone, you know, at the beginning of every call. So the information that you guys are able to get to relate to the officers is, I mean, significant to the way the call is handled from beginning to end. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to public hearings, of which we have a public hearing to discuss the Rock Springs Housing Authority Annual Plan, which will address in Resolution 202339. Is there anybody here for the public comment for the housing plan? Seeing none? We'll move on to petitions. So open to anybody who would like to address the council for any reason. Go ahead there. State your name and...
Hi, thank you. I'm Tom Gangian. I live in the, basically, the Fox Street of the Rock Springs position. I spoke here about a month ago on the issue of the possibility of major flooding of Bitter Creek. And I'd like to start by thanking and complimenting the mayor, the city council, and D. Bernardi Construction for the work that they have done. They removed a lot of obstructions from there, the nice street bridge, for example. I think that's a great start, but I think I just want to point out that there's a lot of other stretches of the creek that really need a lot of work. I don't know that we'll have time to get them done before the big meltdown happens. As we've all seen in the news, there's been a combination of factors that have led to a lot of floods in Arizona and the South. In fact, if you recall, last summer, there were big floods in Yellowstone that they haven't recovered from yet. The combination there was the big snowpack, just like we have. There was a late snow melt.
Okay, is that better? Can everybody hear? Okay, so there was a late snow melt like we may very well get, and then there was rain. And those factors led to the combination of things that led to the Yellowstone flooding last year. And we actually have potential to have that kind of flooding right here this spring. Okay. I'm personally putting that at about 30%. Okay, that is a good chance that this town will have big flooding coming out of Bitter Creek and Kilpecker Creek. Now, most of you, I think, have seen the photographs that I had emailed to you. I should have done that for the fire department and police department as well, but I neglected to do that. I apologize. But anyway, the, get back on track here. Okay, a friend of mine in her mid-80s, Joyce Cochran, I think most of you know her. She said that this is the worst winter Wyoming has had since 1982. You know, I know that's just kind of anecdotal. It's not very scientific. But I think we can trust her on that one. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of snow out there. And in the pictures I took, what I did is I drove to the end of whatever road that is up there. Signal Road, it goes west toward White Mountain. And then I walked about a mile into an avalanche chute. And you can see this avalanche chute from many points in town. Okay, it's actually become somewhat of a tourist attraction. When I was up there, there were several other people too. And I've never seen that here. Usually, the cornice is on top of White Mountain, are these big fat snowdrifts. Okay, this year, they're looking like, you know, real avalanche stuff. And I walked out onto the avalanche chute, keeping an eye above, of course, the whole time. I took some pictures. And some of those blocks of snow you see in there in those pictures are the size of, say, F-350 Ford pickup trucks. They're enormous, and they probably weigh more than that pickup truck. So there's a lot of snow there. All that's going to drain into Kilpecker Creek. Okay, I was about 1,200 feet above the city, and that was on Saturday, so before this big storm. Okay, this storm, of course, will be memorable. I'm remembering it. I'm giving it the name Stormy Daniels. Lightened up our weather forecast a little there. So anyway, good old Stormy Daniels, big storm here, adding to an already big snowpack, right? So we got a lot of snow up there. We have a pretty good chance of seeing big floods, and I have a few proposals. One is that a little bit more additional work be done clearing trees, basically from the back of O'Reilly's Auto Parts upstream all the way to exit 107. Okay, it's several miles in there. There's still a lot of trees that could be, become obstructions if we do get high water. And I feel kind of hypocritical about that because I love trees. And here I am saying, "Cut them down," right? But, you know, they're the right trees in the wrong place, kind of. You know what I mean? So also, I just want to recommend, and I can help with this if people ask me. I think we should prepare a notice for everybody who lives in the floodplain. Okay, and houses, apartments, trailers, businesses, and so forth, in both Spanish and English. Letting people know that there's some possibility of a flood and not to panic, but give them some ideas of places they can go, things they should have ready, in a sort of a bug-out bag, you know? So that if people have to leave their homes suddenly, they'll have their medications with them, their money, their valuable documents, things like that. So anyway, keeping all that kind of, you know, maybe the city can form some kind of task force or something. I don't know. So let's see. Okay, related to all this, in my pictures, three of those pictures are taken right above Pacific Stale. Okay, I know nobody likes to talk about this, but that business down there, it's a great business. It's a great industry for this area. It's recycling of stale and stuff. But all that stuff in that yard, right at the confluence of Kilpecker Creek and Bitter Creek, and the several bridges right downstream, it's really the wrong place for that business. And I think a discussion has to begin, you know? How can that business move and where to? You know, I don't know the answer to any of those questions, but there are big tanks there for storing fuels that are intended to be demolished and sent off to recycling. But they're still sitting. Right now, there's three of them. They look like they're about, I don't know, 12 or 15 feet at the base and 20 feet high. And I've seen pictures on YouTube videos and stuff of exactly those sorts of things bobbing down streams, rivers, just perfectly until they get to a bridge. And then they become what's called a bridge cork, okay? Where they get stuck under the bridge or against the bridge. And then the water in the stream and the floodway is displaced and has to go around or above onto the floodplain. So I think at the very least, Pacific Stale should be asked, politely asked, to just clean up that yard for now until the flood danger goes away sometime in maybe, I don't know, June or something? Anybody have a crystal ball on that one, right? So anyway, those are just my recommendations as a citizen who owns property in the Lowell Flood, in the Lowell subdivision. Okay? I don't want to see myself getting flooded. I don't want my neighbors to either. If it does happen, you know, we're better off to have a, you know, a leg up on the situation. I also want to mention that White Mountain, by the way, you know, we kind of take for granted. It's kind of innocuous. It just sits there quietly. But it's in fact about 40 miles long, starting in Green River, and it snakes its way all the way up to Farsen. Okay? And one of the features is the east slope of it is very steep, and that's where all the big, what you might call, snow bowls form. And those are, some of those have got to have 40 feet of snow on them right now, at least. And that's the most I've ever seen there. When that stuff starts melting, it's going to let us know. So anyway, those are all my pictures from Saturday. I shared six pictures with you guys total. The last one's the most significant because it looks down on the Kilpecker Creek Valley with Pacific Stale and other businesses. And in the background looming is White Mountain with the big snowdrifts that are up there. And that's something we have to think about. And White Mountain, by the way, is actually significantly lower than, say, Aspen Mountain or Kenny Rim, okay, or Cooper Ridge. Okay, these are all areas that are in the drainage of Bitter Creek. Okay, and as I said last time I was here, we're talking 2,400 square miles of watershed, okay? That is way above average in its snowpack this year. And good old Stormy Daniels didn't help us in this. So that's about it. I would say that I just want to add one more thing, sort of a personal complaint. In the past, I have written about this sort of thing very extensively in articles and editorials in The Rocket Miner and on Sweetwater Now. I've provided them photographs numerous times, usually not making any money for my efforts. But right now, they will no longer publish me or at least two other writers, and it is because we take a liberal bent on things. Okay, so this is a sort of informal censorship. And you guys should ask yourselves, is this the world you want to live in where half the population's opinions don't count? So yeah, Rocket Miner and Sweetwater Now is not an option for me to express my concern for the town. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. No, thank you for the pictures. I didn't know exactly what those were from, but I assumed it was that up on White Mountain.
Yeah, the first three...
Been watching it for a little while, so...
The first three are from about 7,400 feet in altitude. So it's most of the way up White Mountain, but well below the cornices. And it's a pretty impressive sight. If you want to walk up there, don't try it when it's muddy. And, but you can go up there right now on snowshoes very easily and...
Just word of caution to anybody going up there, just don't. Because if it is that unstable and there's that much snow, we just, we don't need to risk other lives.
You can stay on a ridge and you're quite safe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for hearing me out. Thank you.
Yes, that does bring up one thing. It just remind residents of Rock Springs that there are drainages and that it may be your responsibility behind your home or on your property. And it is incumbent of you to clean those out regularly and make sure there is no debris in there. That's a big cause of what, a big reason why we get a lot of damage within the city is because people are not maintaining their drainage, and it causes issues for everybody. So just a quick reminder to everybody to pay attention to what's around you and do what you can to help prevent your neighborhood from flooding.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I could add to that, sometimes people will take their tree prunings and toss them in some of those drainages as well. Don't do that because that also adds to the problem.
Yep, there's amazing what you find from trash to tree trimmings to concrete. I just don't know how all that gets there, but we need to make sure that we're cleaning those out and keeping them clear. So thank you for that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Taking a look at the Wyoming Snow Tel Current Snow Water Equivalent Percentage of Normal. Currently, our area is at 143% of the average. That's as of today. There's only two places that I'm looking at right now in Wyoming that are higher. One's the Little Snake Region, which is 157%. And then the other is the extreme southwest corner, actually Evanston and westbound at 155. So with us being 143, we're pretty high. Just to throw it out to Paul, and just kind of out of curiosity, do we have any plan at this point to, as far as sandbags or any precautions that we are trying to get in advance of this melt? Because my understanding is probably within the next seven days, we're going to be up to about 50, 55 degrees. We're going to be getting a lot of, a lot of water everywhere. Do we have any precautions that we're working on?
Mr. President, Counselor Robinson. Last year, we were fortunate to receive five, I call them sandbag machines. They're not really a machine, but they're a device that facilitates that. And we have a plan for deployment of those, and we have a fairly significant stock of empty sandbags. In the event that that becomes a need, we do have arrangements made with the Streets Department to get sand dropped at specific locations and deploy those machines so that folks can fill sandbags or we can put together a crew to do so.
Great. Based on where the snowpack is, Paul, do we have any predictions of where we may experience the most flooding this season? Or is that just kind of a, you know, crap shoot?
Your Honor, Counselor Robinson, you know, I can't predict that.
Sure.
You know, it depends on temperatures. It depends on, as he stated, if we get a rainfall event at the same time that we're getting, you know, higher temperatures. But I can't predict where it may or may not flood.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, no, you know, I don't expect you to be, you know, what was Johnny Carson's, The Great Cardini? Or, you know, knowing the future, that'd be great.
I wish I had that ability, but I don't.
Sure, sure. And I'm not a meteorologist or a geologist, so I don't, I can't say where, you know, the water is going to melt and where it's going to go. But, you know, we've had some pretty crazy floods in the last few years, and they were never in the same place, you know? So I just didn't...
We do have our known locations that it has occurred in the past. And, you know, and we have projects in the works.
Sure.
Just like the specific purpose tax-type projects to, you know, to alleviate that. Or, you know, I can't say totally eliminate the risk, but to alleviate the risk in the future. But them projects are going to take some time to be constructed.
Right.
They're definitely not going to be done by this year. There are certain things that we can do in the, in the major drainages. I'm still comply with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers, and there are certain things that we can't do. But, you know, localized flooding, where we did have a lot of the pipes opened up and gutters and inlets, and we've been trying to do that for more localized stuff. Of course, this storm set us back to square one, but...
Right.
As for the drainages, it's really going to really depend on Mother Nature and how it all plays out.
Great, thank you.
May I know that, if I'm... I agree with what this gentleman said. It depends on Mother Nature and how it all plays out. But we're not helpless in this. We can take some preparation. One of the big things would be simply knowledge, providing people who live in the floodplain with a little heads up, get them thinking about how they can help themselves if it comes to that. And the sandbags, I hope that they are distributed before the flood rather than after the flood. And the sandbags, I hope that they are distributed before the flood rather than after the flood. That's, that's a common theme, too. And that's about it. Thank you. If you have any other issues.
Thank you. So note, before this storm, I think we were at a hundred and thirty-seven percent, I saw, so this was a doozy to add it to it, so. Be prepared. All right, that takes us to, we had Joseph Bingman on the agenda, but I believe that has been resolved, and we can move on from there. He's not here to address counsel. Is there anybody else here willing to address counsel for any reason? Mr. Halter, you have anything to say? No, no more?
Snowplowed my street today.
Good deal. All right, on to bills and claims. I have bills and claims for April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion for approval?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve bills and claims for April fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Obstinate.
And one abstention. Takes us to salaries for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve salaries.
Thank you, Councilor Demus, can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain?
Abstain.
One abstention. Brings us on to new business. We have approval of the annual drinking water quality report for May twenty twenty-three. Ready to get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
And roll call, please, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed? None? On to request from the Police Department for permission to apply for the twenty-twenty-four Highway Safety Behavioral Program grant. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion, can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And new business number three, request from the Parks and Recreation Department for permission to apply for a grant from the Sweetwater County Conservation District. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve this request.
Councilor Demus, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Brings us to the request from the Engineering and Operations and Public Services Department for permission to apply for discretionary congressional funding through Congresswoman Harriet Hagman's office for the Bitter Creek Restoration Phase Two Project. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve this request.
And can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to the next request from the Water Reclamation Facility for permission to fill a vacant collection system worker one position. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business passes. Brings us to the request from the Fire Department for permission to apply for two state homeland security preparedness grants to sustain the capabilities of the Region Four Emergency Response Team. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Mr. President? I'm sorry, who's that?
So moved.
Council Robinson, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Brings us to the request from the Boys and Girls Club of Sweetwater County for a road closure to include North Front Street, and the Park Hotel, the K Street, including the North Front Parking Lot, and allowing open containers for alcoholic beverages through the closure area and down J Street for the annual rods and rails car show on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, from nine AM to four PM. I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion, can I get a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Brings us to the request from the American Legion Writers Post Twenty-four for a road closure to include south of five-oh-one South Main Street to the corner of South Main and East E Streets for their annual charity run, June tenth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to ten PM. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion for approval, can I get a second?
Second, your, Mr. President.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Brings us to resolutions. We have resolution accepting and approving the Public Housing Authority Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four Annual Plan. Can I get a motion for approval?
Don't we have to read them?
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
A resolution accepting and approving Public Housing Authority Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four Annual Plan and authorizing Max Mickelson acting in his capacity as chairman of the Rock Springs Housing Board to execute certifications of compliance with the Public Housing Authority Plan.
And roll call, please, or a motion?
Your Honor?
I'm learning.
I move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash thirty-nine.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, and now roll call.
Yay!
Counselor Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Pedri?
Abstain.
Demus?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. Brings us to Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash four-zero.
A resolution accepting and approving a concession stand rental agreement with Rock Springs Little League Baseball and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Can I get a motion for approval?
I will move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash four-zero.
Thank you, Counselor Hickerson, can I get a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Pedri?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Batolo?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. Brings us to Resolution Twenty Twenty-three forty-one.
A resolution accepting and approving a proposal with Y-Two Consultants LLC in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said proposal on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve Twenty Twenty-three dash forty-one.
I have a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Hickerson?
Yes.
Pedri?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. Brings us to Resolution Twenty Twenty-three forty-two.
A resolution approving public parking space lease agreement with the City of Rock Springs and Bitter Creek Brewing LLC to provide for the placement of an outdoor dining deck in the parking space located adjacent, adjacent to its establishment.
Can I get a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve Twenty Twenty-three dash four-two.
Motion, can I get a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Counselor Pedri?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. Brings us to Resolution Twenty Twenty-three forty-three.
A resolution accepting and approving a restaurant concession area lease for the White Moon Golf Course between the City of Rock Springs and E's and authorizing Max Mickelson as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said lease on behalf of the city.
Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve Twenty Twenty-three dash forty-three.
Have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Counselor Demus?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Pedri?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. Resolution Twenty Twenty-three forty-four.
A resolution accepting and approving a Wyoming Community Foundation Competitive Grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand two hundred sixteen dollars for improvements to the Garnet Park Splash Pad and authorizing John J. Sevrud as Recreation Center Superintendent for the Rock Springs, or for the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute the Wyoming Community Foundation Competitive Grant Agreement on behalf of the city.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion and a second, please?
Second.
And roll call.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Pedri?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. And last on the list, Resolutions Twenty Twenty-three forty-five.
A resolution approving Wells Fargo Commercial Bank Banking Financial Institution to be designated as a depository for public funds.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Hickerson, and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Batolo?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hickerson?
Yes.
Pedri?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes. Brings us to ordinances, and on second reading, we have Ordinance Twenty Twenty-three zero-one.
An ordinance amending Article eight-four of the ordinances of the City of Rock Springs entitled personnel requirements.
Any discussion among counsel or anything on the second reading?
No.
Brings us to Ordinance Twenty Twenty-three zero-two.
An ordinance amending Section one, six-oh-four C of the ordinances of the City of Rock Springs entitled adopting the personnel policies and procedures relating to City of Rock Springs employees and adopting revised personnel policies.
Are you on the second readings? Anyone in counsel have any comments or questions? That takes us to Ordinance Twenty Twenty-three zero-three on its first reading.
An ordinance amending Article three, two of the ordinances of the City of Rock Springs entitled defenses concerning public morals and decencies.
With that, I do, with that being a first reading, I encourage counsel to please reach out to law enforcement and that, if there's any concerns or any issues with the proposed ordinance for discussion at the next meeting. That being the last item of business on the agenda, I'll move to adjourn, or I guess I am going to just adjourn.
I can't find them damn pictures that dude's in.
It starts like, kind of wearing out.
I kept waiting for you to do the splash.